Musical chairs.
You have one? He's on vacation, I don't think so, but.
Morning, Mike.
Got the right nameplate.
Call this meeting the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Chalka?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have the agenda as received or as amended. So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved. Next is public comments. I don't see anybody in the room. Is there anybody online? I don't think so. All right, we will move on to claims and payments.
Good morning. Claims and payments come out to a total of sixty, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seven, two hundred and seventy-six and fifty-seven cents. The large contributors to that are the Jail Boiler Project for a hundred and fifteen thousand, one eighty-one. Secondary Roads, sixty-four thousand, eight ninety-five. There was a workers' comp premium that we pay, fifty-five thousand, nine forty-two. Maintenance came to a total of sixty thousand, one eighty-five. Social Services, forty-four thousand, one eighty. Finish it off, IT at one hundred and twenty-two thousand, one seventy-five. And that big portion is just our New World contract, so everything else looks normal.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Chalka?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next we'll receive project updates from department heads or elected officials. We'll start in the room today.
Good morning, Board.
Right.
Kathy, this is County Attorney. Update on the roads. All of our gravel roads are now open. The flooding has receded. We have cleaned all that up and all roads are open due to no more water being on the road. We have closed Canfield Road, north of Dubic Road. For a few days now, we need to replace a culvert in preparation of a resurfacing project in the next several years. I wanted to mention that I believe you all received a correspondence from a gentleman who lives on West Bennington Road concerning the water in his property. He is maintaining that it most likely is exacerbated by the construction of the new interchange on Highway 218. Of course, at the county level, we were involved in numerous meetings with the DOT. At that time, I do not recall all of the conversations that went on between us and the DOT. The interchange has been open now since 2016. So, Mr. Little and I were speaking yesterday and I've decided, he suggested that we transmit the letter to the Iowa DOT, the Hydraulics Section, and they would have done the design on this, at the intersection, interchange, excuse me, for the particular interchange. So I'm going to forward it onto them and I will CC you with that letter. And we'll try and see if we can find some information out for the letter writer.
Are you going to make him aware of that too, Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, I was going to copy him on the, the letter as well.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yes, can I answer any other questions?
Kathy, I just want to say I appreciate how you try to stay ahead of this. When this stuff comes in, you take the initiative to take care of it right away and.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Board. Maintenance Superintendent, Rory Givens. Just wanted to let the Board know, at our Pinecrest facility, yesterday morning, we did lose our cooling system, our chiller system. We have a crew actually working on it. We have a second crew coming in this morning. In fact, they should be over there as we speak. We're hopeful to get that system back up and running. We did run out and we purchased a number of fans to place throughout the building. It is getting very warm in there, as you can imagine. Unfortunately, that facility, just, just getting some air movement is what we're trying to do at this point until we get these chillers, chiller system back up online. We do have other cooling systems for that building. For an example, on our fifth floor in the main reception area, that is ran off of a separate system. So there is a bit of cooling in there that we're hoping to try to push that kind of throughout, at least that fifth floor. Because I think that fourth and fifth are probably suffering the most, being on the upper levels there. So, just wanted to assure the Board that we are doing everything that we can to get the system back up and running and hopefully that'll be soon, not today.
Rory?
Yeah?
Rory?
Yes.
Be too long to you when that happens. Why don't you let the Board know? I had phone calls on that yesterday afternoon. Wasn't aware anything going on, so when that happens in the future, notify the Board.
I agree. We didn't know until five o'clock yesterday afternoon and had several calls. Well, if we don't know what's going on, we don't know what's going on. So, you know, it'd help if we were on top of it ourselves, so we don't look like we don't know what's going on.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. We did send mass emails, actually two of them, out to Pinecrest updating them just yesterday. And we spoke to the department heads over at Pinecrest as well. So, apologize that you even received phone calls. So, moving forward, we'll make sure to do that.
And it's unfortunate, but maybe something to mention of the department heads meetings too. They need to forward that information to their staff, so people do know that something's going on.
Yeah, sometimes we make an assumption when we send that out to the department heads that they're warning their staff, because I would imagine that their staff would come to them before coming to the Board. But as we know, that sometimes that's not the case.
You've done a really good job at times with a text, just a group text to all of us on some things, like updates once in a while too. And I'd like to keep it easy for you, but also making us aware of it, if that would work.
No, absolutely.
That was something great that worked before, so thank you.
Yeah, we got kind of inundated with this one yesterday and we were, we had a little bit of tunnel vision on just trying to get the problem resolved, so, and that's on me. So moving forward, we'll, we'll try to do a better job communicating with the Board, so you guys can field those questions as well.
Another thing on this cooling system, I think it should stay on 24/7. It doesn't make sense to me to turn it down like we do and then try to get it back to where it's cooling here. I was in here Friday in the courthouse. It was too warm for, people wouldn't have been working here Friday, I know, but it was too warm in here. So when it gets warm in here, it takes twice as long to cool down. So, I suggest we leave it on 24/7.
It's, it's a little different with a chiller system. On Monday mornings, we do start it at 3:00 a.m., just to catch up over the weekend. And then the rest of the mornings, we started at 5:00 a.m. We've been doing that and that, that seems to work very well. The only issue with running it, it is very, very expensive, because you're running all of your, your pumps. And we can put some dollar amounts to that cost if the Board would like to make a decision on that. But I can tell you that running it 24/7 would be a substantial.
So you're, you're saying it wasn't made to run 24/7?
No, it's, it can run. It's just a matter of scheduling. I'm just saying to cool this size of a building down when there's very few or none, nobody in here, it is, it is very expensive, very costly. So, but if we're willing to take on that cost, I can put some, some information together and send it to the Board. Not to mention it's a lot of additional wear and tear on the system.
I'd be willing to bet if you do some checking on it, it's just as expensive for you to turn it up and down like that.
Not, not on a chiller system. It's a little different than your home furnace or your home air conditioner. This is a water-cooled system, so.
You're talking about people's lives. Yesterday, it was uncomfortable out there. That system went down, number of people went home. There's time lost on, that's, you're not figuring that in either. And when the air isn't, if the system isn't running, there's no air moving around in here, right?
No, the air handler shut down also at 5:00.
Yeah, so that, no fresh air in here in the building.
Well, so, so are you talking about the Pinecrest facility?
I'm talking about here now.
Okay.
The courthouse?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that was kind of, that's kind of how we manage the, the building when it's closed.
So, that, that could, that leads to germs just laying around the whole time too.
Well, I think the way the chiller system works, when the chiller is running, our exhaust fan actually does not exhaust out, because otherwise we'd exhaust all of that conditioned air out. So, yeah, you're right.
Still moving air around. There's air moving around, Rory.
Okay, well, if you would like me to run the buildings 24/7, at least this building.
I'd like to see the numbers at least. I'm only one vote, so.
Yeah.
So how is that when, and then, and everybody comes in in the mornings? Is, what, is the temperature where it's supposed to be or should be? Or where are we typically?
This is really the first time I've heard of an issue. We've been running this way for quite some time. We start the, again, we start the chillers at 5:00 in the morning. Most people start showing up around 7:00, 7:30, 8:00. That gives us a good couple of hours to, to get the building down to temp.
Rory?
Yes?
And you're thirty and I agree with it, but also I think you gotta be a little flexible with weather like this, where the market starts out at 75 degrees, then you may have to adapt and do things a little different. And if we get to the normal part of the summer where it doesn't get quite as warm, but I agree with what you're saying, but this has been unusually warm. A building doesn't even get a chance to cool down at all at night.
Well, yeah, it is still, like I said.
This building actually, I mean, granted by time Saturday, and in this case Friday, because we, you know, we, we shut it down on Thursday. But this building is, retains its temperature fairly decent. Granted, if it goes a day or two, it is going to start warming up. And that's why we, we set it at 3:00 a.m. on Monday mornings, so it's got a good amount of time to get caught up for Monday. But again, we can, we can put some scenarios together on what that additional cost. But you gotta imagine, if you're going to run that all night long, that's, that's almost doubling your, your energy use. Because this building doesn't know if people are here or not.
It's not, it's not cooling down that way though, or it's not heating up. If it's not heating up, it doesn't take as long to cool down. End of story.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess we'll take a look at it. That was going to say at least, thank you.
Good morning, Kim Veeder, IT Director. As I emailed you yesterday, I do have a final decision on the network administration position and he agreed yesterday to start on the 27th of July. As I mentioned in the email, our first interviews included some ISIT members and Amanda participated as well. We wanted to take another look at Clint and since he's in the area, I did have him come in and I did have someone from ASIS attend the interview as well. And the reason I was, had him included was because his point was just to verify the technical ability of the applicant. We talked about some of the same, same things that we talked about in the first interview. Gave Clint the opportunity to ask some questions of us, but in the end, it's my decision. ASIS, you know, just was my second person to say, hey, yes, they do have the technical ability, so.
Well, Kim, I think that was a good idea. You're getting more and more opinions you did. You had ISIT involved, I think that was great too. So the fact that ASIS has been doing and working with our system for so long, working with you, I think that was beneficial, so.
Right, well, and then, like I said, Clint did ask a lot of good questions about how things are set up. And so, there were some things that, you know, are more technical that I wasn't aware of, that he was able to talk about. We had a tour of the IT server room and that went real well. And he had a lot of, I'm very confident about this decision.
Great.
Very good.
Okay, and the one thing I'll say too about the group of people that we chose the three to interview from, a lot of capable people, maybe not the level that the network administrator, so potential for the specialist position in a desktop technician.
What are your thoughts or plans for that, for further changes in the department?
Yeah, well, I had hoped to give the new network administrator a little time to get his feet wet, so he could be part of that conversation. And that we could say, hey, you know, you've got the skill set here. Maybe what we're needing is some more information, or somebody with a better background in here, so. Like you said, there are people that we've, we have their applications and the, you know, so I think we have to bid it again. I mean, post it again, but it takes, they have to, how many days?
So it'll be a minimum ten days. You know, we could look at possibly this fall, depending on.
Can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the microphone.
For the network specialists in the desktop position, I think we could definitely probably have that, start the recruiting process this fall, depending on how the new network administrator comes in and kind of gets their feet wet, gives an idea for where our needs are in IT. But, yeah, we post those for a minimum of 10 days for veterans preference. We've had a pretty good response, I would say, for some of our IT positions. Consolidated has their network administrator opening right now. So, yeah, I anticipate that we'll have another good recruitment and be able to fill those as well. But is there a, I guess a timeframe that you guys are looking at? Or anything that we should know to get these filled? Is there?
Well, that team that worked on it, what was their thoughts on it? The IT team that, we, that spent time in here, they should have some input on it.
Right, well, and I would hope that we would, early fall, is get going with that. But I would think that they would agree that it would be helpful for the network administrator to be part of that conversation when, you know, interview and that kind of thing. So, we need, I mean, if he starts the 27th, I think we'd at least have to give him a month here at the minimum to get caught up.
That'll be good, I think, the two of you working together and trying to, try and build your team, so. I think that's great. Keep us updated, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Well, and like I said, yesterday, we got confirmation of his start date. And so, I think he passed his last week, so, end of last week, so, very good go.
And you're kind of down one person almost now though, from what you had before.
Yes, yes, we are. And so the sooner that we get somebody on board, because right now, Glenda's term, or term, looking at all the elected officials, her position was, ended at the end of the fiscal year. So her last day was June 30th. So it's just Deb and I right now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Morning, Board. Grant Veeder, County Auditor.
Morning.
Wanted to talk to you about absentee ballots again. The election that we're having today in Cedar Falls is an election that, if you remember way back in March, we already sent out absentee ballot request forms to all the active registered voters in Cedar Falls. And we ended up getting about six, nearly 7,000 ballots requested out of a total of 29,890 registered voters. And that was about 23%. And the turnout for the runoff election in December was under 15%. The turnout for the election in the fall was about 26%. The city school regularly scheduled the election. So, we're seeing that the absentee ballot request mailings are paying off. They paid off very well in the primary election. And so, we're talking about doing that again for the general election in November. So, there's a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about that. The initial mailing that we would do on that to send out absentee request forms to everyone, with the print job and the postage would be about $28,000. And we think that we can cover that in the election budget because of some of the changes, some of the things that we won't be doing because of the pandemic. We're going to be reducing number of polling places, although not as drastically as we did for the primary. We also won't be able to do the in-person training that we are required to do. We're, we'll, we'll still do training, but it won't be in-person and so the cost won't be as great for that. So, what I am more concerned about is we would have the choice of whether we would put return postage on those absentee ballot requests, which would cost, and this is just an estimate, if it was, it would be 61 cents per piece. And if we had 40,000, just a rough estimate of what we might get for absentee ballot request forms, that would cost $24,400. That would be beyond the budget that we have. And so we would be coming to the Board to ask for a budget amendment to be able to do that. And I would strongly encourage the Board to consider that. And we aren't going to probably be doing this mailing until the end of July, beginning of August. For one thing, we have to wait to see. This election today is five people running for one position. And if nobody gets a majority, there will be a runoff first Tuesday in August. So, we don't want to run into that with the absentee request mailing, so we need to wait and see what's going to happen there before we set a date. But it will be in that range, late July, early August, that we would do this mailing. And I would like to get an indication from the Board before then if you would support doing the return postage, which I highly recommend. So, any questions?
I, I fully support. I think it was a very successful program. I think the return postage is a key part of making it successful.
I support it too.
I agree.
I agree.
And I got a question. For the general election, how many precincts are you going to have? Your normal 66 voting places?
We normally have 62 and we haven't determined yet exactly how many we'll have. The law that was passed by the legislature just recently, we can only go down to 65% of the total if we're doing that for an emergency. There's some question about exactly how the law is written, but I wouldn't want to go below that anyway. But we'll, we'll have to weigh a number of factors. I, I want to have as much on-day voting as is prudent, but we not only have to look at how we want to arrange it, but also what places will be available. We rely heavily on churches for this and many churches do not wish to be polling places for this election. We will be talking to the schools. We used to do lots of schools as polling places, but in the past 20 years or so, they asked us to not use them because of security issues, which we've honored, although the law says that if you're a publicly supported building, then you have to be available for being a polling place. We are just starting discussions with the Iowa Association of School Administrators. They seem to be, or at least their director seems to be very supportive of us using schools, but that would be a lot of things to work out. So, I can't give you a direct answer to your question, Tom, but it's something that we're working on.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials today?
Good morning, this is Nafisa. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm on audio. Good, good morning, Board. To provide an update, I'm here to provide a COVID update. Over the weekend, we've had 108 cases, which means that we are also seeing a resurgence like other larger counties and also what's going on at the state and national level. So prior to, to the weekend, we did a video communication just to, again, inform people of the face covering. We had noticed that people were, were not wearing them as frequently as before. So we are going to continue to push those communications out to the community. The second thing is we are meeting on Thursday with the, the business community. Grove Cedar Valley is helping us to have a business town hall meeting, just to provide them with an update on COVID and some guidance. And, and I know some businesses are struggling with the, whether they should require face masks or not, but we're seeing also a pattern whereby businesses have had to voluntarily close because of the, the staff touching positive. So we want to get ahead of that. So instead of, you know, them closing, what can we do? And for them to come together as one, to have the same message across, so that there's consistency. So we're going to, we're, we're working with the businesses and we're going to just walk through them with certain practices or questions they have on Thursday. I have a scheduled meeting on Monday with the superintendents of all the Blackhawk County school districts to go over the, the guidance for the reopening in fall and also just review their, their plans and what they have in mind and, and how we can assist them. Some of the guidance in terms of face masks even for, for the kids has just been a bit confusing from, from the state and national levels. And so, we are going to look at what we need to recommend for Blackhawk County and, and have those recommendations for, for the school district. So we're trying to get ahead of everything just to prepare for the fall. We've been working closely with the University of Northern Iowa, Hawkeye Community College, just in terms of their reopening guidelines. I think that they'll be, they'll be ready by the time school starts. So we're, we're just meeting with those groups and going through those plans step by step. So, that's where we're at as a health department. Again, we'll, we'll try to push through those campaigns of just the social distancing and face covering, because at this moment, this is key to what's, what's going to help us. In terms of our cases, we are seeing a pattern that is among the 17 and the 30-year-olds. So, this is different from the first phase where it was, in fact, in the elderly population. As you can see, our number of deaths hasn't increased and we're very thankful for that. So, but we are seeing a, a pattern of just the younger population being, being detected positive and also asymptomatic. So they're going for testing, but some of them do not have symptoms. And so we're, you know, we continue to monitor that and we'll continue to push those communications out to the community. And I also would, if the Board has any questions for me, please do. But that's where we are. Our, our primary focus has really been how to assist the, the businesses and also the, the schools, K through 12 and, and higher ed, in terms of their returning to learn for the fall.
Thank you. Do we have any other updates from department heads or elected officials today?
Mike Kendrickson, Director of County Conservation. Just wanted to let everybody know, our business is, is just through the roof almost. Camping is incredible. Our online reservation systems are, I don't know how they have anything else to even reserve as far as campsites and cabins, because we are, we are just packed. But please know, the numbers are wonderful, the revenue is wonderful, but it does sort of come with a price or an added risk. I think we saw a little bit of that last week with, with our employees and I, we're going to see what it can. People need that recreation and, and we're very happy that we can provide that. But it, it does put our park rangers and our outdoor staff, our naturalists and, and all those people at added risk. staff, our naturalists, and, and all those people at added risk. And we continue to reiterate with our staff the importance of, of all the social distancing requirements and the masks and all those, not only for themselves, but for people that are using our facilities, especially our youth that are coming to the nature center. And the nature center, those programs are just, we are, we are limiting the numbers, but we, we could probably, we, we could double or triple our, our size if we wanted to, and they would fill. Everyone is, is that hungry to go and, and do those things. But we're keeping them, keeping them at a fixed number just for, for safety reasons. I do want it, want all of you to know that, that we are taking extreme precautions with all of our facilities as we go through all this and as we handle these numbers. We have misting systems for the South Unit, the North Unit, and the Nature Center. Those facilities are misted every day after, at the end of the day. And so we're, we're doing everything that, that we can possibly do. So again, numbers are wonderful, but it, it, it does put some, put some risk out there. But, but I think we're doing all that we can do. And I, I hope we can avoid some of the scares we had last week. But I, but I also know that reality says we're going to get some more of those reports. So I'll keep you updated, but at least things are going well here. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right. I think that's everybody. We will move on to minutes approved from the June 30th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed. Minutes are approved. Next is the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Yes. It is approved. We'll move on to other business. This is a motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder, Information Technology Director, be approved and directed chair to sign the same to purchase 18 desktop computers for $18,972 from CDW JSG to be used by the Attorney's Office and the Board Supervisor's Office.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed. The motion carries. Next is a motion that the personnel requisition for administrative aid three, this is full-time position in the county maintenance office, be approved as recommended by Roy Giving, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed. The motion carries. Next is a resolution that the IRS Form 720 to remit payment of $1,749.30 for the county's patient-centered outcomes research institute fee for the 2018-2019 plan year as required by the Affordable Care Act be approved and directed chair to sign the same as recommended by Stacy Watershead and Renee McPhee, Perspective Consulting Partners LLC.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yep.
Short. Yes. Resolution carries. Next is discussion, possible board action, discuss county fairness for COVID-19.
Chair.
Yes.
I just want to reemphasize the importance of facial coverings and social distancing.
Absolutely. It's, it's our, lacking a vaccine, which we may not have for, we don't know how long. This is our, our best weapon against that, that and regular personal hygiene as well.
Another thing is info coming down, coming down the, the stream or going up the stream, being shared, needs to be everyone, all supervisors should be CC'd on any information shared for one supervisor. All supervisors should get it. There is no reason that we should have found out Sunday afternoon at 5:00 about the situation last week. I have a real problem with that. That's lack of communication someplace, and it needs to be fixed and fixed now.
I think we can send a memo out to department heads just asking if there's, if there is a situation of concern. I would think letting the, the Health Department, Maintenance, HR, and the Board know would be appropriate.
I agree.
Oh, were we just talking about health, in particular, health?
Yeah. Well, just about anything, but especially health in regards to what went on last week. I said that should, that should have been shared. There's people in here that are over the age of 60 or whatever that would be endangered. I've got several check marks, and I don't appreciate hearing at 5:00 on Sunday about, like I said, what happened last week. It should have been shared immediately.
Board should be CC'd on everything that goes through this county.
Pardon me, Tom? I couldn't hear you, Tom.
The board should be CC'd on everything that goes through this county regardless of what the business is.
I agree. That's what I said. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Move on to our reports, your information from the board. I'll just mention a project that Supervisor Tralka and I have been involved with for quite some time, over a year now, and that was the establishment of the Waterloo Warming Center. As you know, the, the trials and tribulations we went through this winter, having to move locations and find a spot, a temporary spot with, with a sprinkler system. An opportunity has come up for a facility that our, our coalition, which is, is led by the, the Hospitality House, has put an offer on a place, and we're raising funds currently for this. And we're going to discuss possible county support for the center with the board. And so I'm going to put the agenda item just for discussion for next week so we can get folks their, their questions answered and bring you all up to speed as much as Dan and I are on the project. And just let you hear from other stakeholders in the community. This is really, one of the, the good things about this is that having a warming center that accepts everybody regardless of whether they're dealing with addiction or alcoholism, having a central place that they, that they can go to, that they know they're not going to be barred from because of whatever position they're in, meant that we were reaching the most vulnerable people in this community. And that becomes an entry point to direct them to services that can help get their lives on a different track. And it became really important at the start of the pandemic that we had these most vulnerable people in our population. We know that they were going to a place every evening that somebody could check in with them on. And it was, that's why we were able to, at least for this first wave of the, of the pandemic, get through it without an outbreak amongst our, amongst our homeless population. That was not true in, in many, many communities across the country. And the facility did extend the operation for, for two additional months to be able to meet that need. And so it's just a, another piece of the puzzle that we talked about diverting people from, from, from jail to have that, that other place to go to. We've got the DTAC Center now, which is fantastic. And this would be just another piece of that, of that puzzle as we engage in, in, in mental health reforms in this community.
Well, I know the Waterloo police officers appreciated it because instead of them being tied up for two, three, four hours with an individual, this was a resource for them to take a person to, and they, 15 minutes, and they were free of the responsibility. And I forget how many we, we served. We didn't serve 800 individuals, but we provided a place over 800 times.
Yes.
And some were repeat customers.
Mm-hmm.
But I was kind of shocked at the numbers, how high they were.
Yeah. It was, and for someone with a shoestring budget, it was really able to provide a really big service in the community. We, the money that we did raise, we were able to hire what we call peer support. These are people that were formerly homeless themselves to give them a little bit of more pocket money to be able to help staff the facility overnights. And it really is just kind of a win-win-win situation. The facility that we're looking at is, and I'll send you all the address. I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's an old dentist office on South Street, close to the Grouse Historic District.
Oh, okay. I know where you're talking.
Yeah. There's a little barber shop in the back of it. And it's a purchase price of $150,000. At the sale, $35,000 comes back from the seller as a, as a donation. But that, that will be used to cover the installation of the sprinkler system. But, but.
Well, I've always had a soft spot in my heart for the homeless, but I take a realistic approach. The sign holders on San Martin, I don't give them any money because there's, there's services they could take advantage of. It kind of annoys me that they're out there asking for money. But if there's a homeless person sitting on the sidewalk, I'll ask them what they want from Jimmy John's or Subway. I'll buy them a sandwich.
Yeah.
We, this is a good resource for us to try to help people get back on their feet. So.
So then next week, you're.
Yeah. Next week, we're going to invite, some stakeholders are going to join via Zoom. Some people are more experts about the community than even Dan and myself are, and just share even more of the information. One thing I was going to ask James to connect with Colleen Shipper. She was very supportive of the program, even volunteered a number of nights herself, and was a key part of our, our response for the pandemic of linking if we needed to quarantine people. And she's been looking at the, at the end of her fiscal year budget, she, there is a, a good chunk of money left over in her budget. And she thinks it's partially due to the economic stimulus checks that went out to folks, and that that results in a slightly less demand than was expected on some of the housing assistance programs. And so there might be some, some money available there. And she'd be very enthusiastically supportive of, of seeing some of that allocated towards a project like this. So I was going to ask James to connect with Colleen this week and, and really kind of look through what, what is left over in that budget.
Off, off the cuff, I mean, I, I do know that when we're looking at, when we're looking at that line item specifically, I believe there was, you know, quite a bit left. I, I want to say it was actually close to about 25% of that budget line item left only for shelter. And that is quite a bit of, quite a bit of dollars. Obviously, it helped with, you know, the, the loss in revenue and that kind of thing. So that's going to be a, you know, a decision for everybody to make. But specifically for that line item, yeah, there, there is some wiggle room there, I suppose. So.
Very good. But if, others who I just think of a question that they come up with this week, just forward it to either Dan or myself, and we'll try to get that answered.
Well, thank you for what you guys are doing on that. That is reputable. You know, it's, it is needed here in this community, most definitely. And like we were talking about before the meeting, the mental health or the brain health, it's a, a big issue right now. And anything we can do, and I agree with you, Dan, there, some of those people out there, uh, uh, whether we're on the center medians, weren't homeless. They were not doing the right thing.
And I'd like to announce that we're still moving ahead with the Field of Honor for August 8th to 9th at the Memorial Hall. The morning of the 8th, that Saturday morning, there'll be a procession starting, I think about, I'm not su, I don't have the numbers with me right now, but it'll be, it'll be a small number, but they'll be crossing a bridge from the Vietnam Memorial over to Memorial Hall placing flags, which will take probably a couple hours because there's just short of 600 flags. These flags, each flag will represent a soldier or sailor from Black Hawk County that served in the Civil War up to present day war, that was killed in the line of duty. And they'll have their name and rank and everything on it. And these will, the flags will be not for sale, but will be given to people for a donation of $40 after the ceremony. So there's going to be plenty of flags for sale and all that, or for a donation. Will be used for, to help raise ones for the Honor Flights for next year and for Exchange Club, which is, you know, all the clubs are hurting right now because of this pandemic. So it'll help keep the Exchange Club open and all the good things they do for people. So I'm inviting anybody down. I'll have pamphlets ready next week that I can pass out and have available in the downstairs too. So.
Very good.
More to come for, for.
Very good. Any other reports from the board? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion, oh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.